O, good day.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce the uh, Chief of Police, Mr. Naco, one two, Ben.
The board-
I'm sorry.
The board, uh, on this evening, we will talk about the activities and by coming to the door, uh, for whom, who will explain the same items, with the same objection, we need the same items to explain. Secretary Tali, this is our floor. I'm sorry, I'm not here.
The Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Samuel Nierwai Mares.
Present.
The Presiding Officer, Postemporo, Councillor, Ocolonion, Diva Kai.
Present.
The Majority Leader, Councillor, Sir Igorado.
Present.
The Majority Leader, Councillor, Oscar A. Guling.
Present.
Councillor, Carolyn D. Dizon. Councillor, Michelle S. Segunbera. Councillor, Ucili Toopon Terera.
Present.
Councillor, Bernard S. De Rabago.
Present.
Councillor, Pauline Inanoi. Councillor, Dalia M. Delion. Councillor, Alfred Perez, Piri Castro. Ex-Supichu members, we can have a little break, present the three of you, Bakaai.
Present.
And for the soot of the direction of the government, come to the president's lower living room.
Present.
Thirteen members of this august body is wanted to the podium.
Fifty members is wanted to the podium, now signify the presence of Toru, we now grant him some particular business. Please, the ten times again. Next item, I'll be ready.
Approval, but yeah, but.
Global, but yeah, but. Any an assigned business before, uh, representing the floor? Secretary Tali.
We have three unassigned businesses here. The first item is a request for an ordinance localizing the provisions of Republic Act 11313, otherwise known as the Safe Space Act, in the City of Alaminos, Pangasinan. The second item is a request for resolution of the rising city mayor, Art Bryce Celeste, to interit the memorandum agreement filed between the local government unit, Alaminos City Pangasinan, and the long back of the Philippines to serve as agent banking partner for unbacked constituents during the Cruz's ID registration. And lastly is a request for resolution of the rising city mayor, Art Bryce Celeste, to interit the memorandum agreement filed between the city government of Alaminos Pangasinan and the VIsBox incorporated for the utilization of VIsBox electronic points portal, the process will have place online.
We have the unassigned business, any unassigned business from the body?
Yes, uh.
Councillor, as you face the back, please.
May likewise include, uh, in our research, uh, of the, of the request of an ordinance launching franchise to the life of the nation of public owners and operator to the information from our side. So broad class line and they place three part sides of E E and the automated establishment and regard this organization of by public dating invasion, which is really the deal that we want to have on our side.
Please, we speak up, Secretary Tali, any other side business, any other?
The, yes, sir, I would like to propose a solution for interdiction of the city office regarding the, uh, regarding out ordinance requiring clearance from this authority by bill of course, extracto of filters of, uh, the truck job, is it, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the structure and, uh, I think it is totally okay.
Okay, uh, President, Secretary Tali, any other unassigned business?
Sir.
Councillor, Alubahay.
Um, sir, I would like to express, uh, na sana, uh, palalalanin din natin yung, for amendment sa, yung mga penalty uh, tungkol sa physical school ng Alaminos, uh, kasi, uh, naawa na ako sa mga barang, mga susukuy namin sa 30 Gustav barangay, uh, yung malalaking penalty na may papa ako sa mga, uh, susukuy, mga barang barangay, sir.
Please, uh, we speak up, Secretary Tali, if you're tackled, uh, bring the unassigned business, any other unassigned business? So I have one, yung, would you go to our administrative case? So we discuss another mamaya, usually, uh, unassigned business, but surviving the administrative complaint with the barangay moment. So with that, uh, Councillor, I beg, we have, uh, one, two, four, five, seven, eight, seven, seven unassigned business.
Mr. Sir, I move for the approval of the, of the agenda of the, uh, to be in the second round.
The board, the Councillor, Castro, Secretary Tali, Councillor, Alubahay, Councillor, Segunbera, Councillor, Breno, the, Councillor, Rado, and Councillor, Pauline Inanoi. For the approval of the set agenda, fine. So, seven, please. Madam Repriates, uh, two weeks' unassigned businesses, any objection? Giving our present agenda support. Adoption of the general edits, any, anyone? Councillor, Brad Abey.
Mister Presiding Officer, I mean for the adoption of the journal and minutes of the S P regular session held on February twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one.
The board, the Councillor, Breno, the Secretary, Councillor, Alubahay, for the adoption of the three minutes, any objection? Amendment, discussion, giving our present, general, and this are adopted. Secretary Tali, next item.
Privilege question, however, the first item is our courtesy call upon the new Chief of Police of Alaminos City Police Station, Police Captain, Colonel Leonard C. Paredes.
The board, the Councillor, for the suspension term, secondly, Councillor, Oscar Valdez. So, Secretary Tali, kindly acknowledge your guest and the other personnel, Pong Minita.
Our guests are Police Captain, Colonel Leonard C. Paredes, the Officer, Inar of Alaminos City Police Station, Police, Police Corporal Jeff Reese, P. Padena, Carabena, P S P, Alaminos. Uh, Police, Je-, uh, Police, Senior Ma- Sergeant Jerry Ipaqua, also from our City, Alaminos City Police Station, and Police Corporal Mark-
Mark- Mark-
Mark Morty Paredes, also from our Alaminos City Police Station.
Yes, sir, so magandang hapor po sa ating lahat. Sir, uh, thank you all for the vision, your presence here in the San Antonio also. So, siyempre po, magbehebreng, introduce yourself and, uh, and mabalikang pering ang San Antonio, pagu-purani OIC.
Good afternoon, uh, thank you, uh, good afternoon, I'm, uh, Police Lieutenant Colonel Leonard Paredes, of the newly installed OIC of Alaminos City, uh, it's my third week as the OIC of Alaminos City Station. So, before, uh, before, I would like to hi- the, our guiding officers, honorable Vice Mayor, Obi Antwone, and the, and the, and the members of the, um, council. Uh, before I was assigned here in, uh, Alaminos City, uh, I, I was assigned in Mindanao or almost half of my background, so I was there for seven years in, uh, San Juan, Galapagos, but being assigned in Pasitan, Tulugan, San Loco City, San Pocengu, Gari. So, uh, we got four, yung teri po dun ka, ka-Mindanao. And when I was given the chance, when I was appointed to make the, I was given the chance to be assigned international headquarters of the Philippine National Police. And I was assigned international headquarters of the Philippine National Police. So, I've been assigned in different directorates in the directors, I was assigned in the Civil Security Group, uh, where I was positioned as the Deputy Chief of the Explosive Punishment Division. I was also assigned, let's say, A D T, and, uh, I was also assigned in the Directorate for Integrated Police Strategy as the Bumper Intelligence Officer. Then, uh, before I was, before my last assignment, I wa- I had the great honor of serving the former G P N P, Lieutenant, uh, the General Camilo Mascolian, so I was his team member for when he was still the Deputy, uh, the Chief Directorial Staff of the G P N P, until he became the Deputy Chief G P N P for Operation, until he became before administration, then until he became the G P N P. And then after that, I became the Budget Officer of the Directorate for Intelligence. Uh, after, I was, I was just recently promoted last December for the Local General, so they gave me a chance to become the City Police Director, or City, uh, as a Chief of Police, because, uh, something I need at the end is to give residence to my, to my, to my rank, and so that I can also impart what I have learned on my previous assignment or my, my experience with the field. So, um, uh, please allow me, sir, uh, to the mem- member of this august body to present the current peace and order situation. If would be sure, I would just fast track this, para ma-please po. So, I will, I will just present the current peace and order situation of, of Alaminos City. Now, this is or, an order situation, uh, shown is my sequence of presentation. On calendar year twenty-twenty, we have a comparative statistic that reflects the different pandemic categorization. Before the E C Q from January one to March sixteen, Alaminos City Police Station recorded a total of thirty-one incidents, broken down to six index crimes and just twenty-seven non-index crimes. While during the E C Q from March seventeen to May thirty, twenty-twenty, Alaminos City Police Station recorded a total of fifty-five crime incidents, all of which are non-index crimes, however, after the lockdown during May thirty-one to date, December thirty-one, crime incidents relatively increased with a total of one hundred and twenty-four incidents. On en- on, on the period January one to February twenty-eight, Alaminos City has recorded a total of thirty-nine incidents compared from the previous year, with a total of twenty-seven crime incidents, that shows a decrease of fourteen. As stated on the previous slide, there is a significant decrease of negative fourteen or fifty-one point eighty-five percent on the overall total crime incidents in Alaminos. When our peace and order indicator, which is the index on non-index crimes, there was a decrease of eleven, negative eleven or four, forty-five point eighty-two percent. While in our public safety indicators, which is composed usually of vehicular incidents, there was a decrease of three, that we had a average percent decrease in the incident. Comparing the index crimes and non-index crimes from the previous year, there is a significant decrease on both classifications. Index crimes decreased by two or forty percent. One-line index crime decreased by twelve or fifty-four point fifty-four percent. On the threat, security threat situation, Pangasinan is insurgency free. As Bay Fair Resolution Number One, dated of twenty-twenty, the province of Pangasinan was declared insurgency free on January twenty-nine. From the date of declaration up to this date, uh, Alaminos City Police Station have not monitored any C P C and C A, and D F movements or, or planned actions or establishment of their, their, uh, stronghold in Alaminos City. For the operational accomplishments of Alaminos City Police Station, on the anti-illegal drugs for three consecutive months from December twenty-twenty to February twenty-twenty-one, Alaminos City Police Station have four successful operations with a total of four arrested drug personalities and confiscation of sha-who, with a total weight of four point nine seven three grams and a split volume of thirty-seven thousand, three hundred fifty-one point ten, assumed. Uh, in my, this is my third week as the Chief OIC of Alaminos City. In the last two weeks, first week and second week, or my second week, nagpapaganda na po kami kaagad ng, during my term, ang isang bypass operation which so far have been the biggest catch in Alaminos City, but, uh, dun naman yung nahuli namin is not a resident of Alaminos, so lumayo lang siya. He transacted here, na, na, na-monitor ng mga intelligence officers namin, so, tabuhan namin 'yung tao, kami ang nakipagtransact, lumapagpo kanina ng Alaminos City, dito na namin siya nahuli. But he's, uh, she is the resident of Unuan, Unukan. Palay po ha, pa. So, isang bulko 'yung nakuha namin sa kanya, it's, uh, so far the biggest catch for him, uh, in Alaminos. And, uh, what is a Pangasinan, uh, so far. On the campaign against loose firearms. So, for the period December twenty-twenty to February twenty-twenty-one, Alaminos City Police Station have two successful operations with a total of two arrested persons with firearms. Further, while firearms were, were surrendered for safekeeping for this to, to Alaminos City Police Station during the Oplantatok, sending renewal of their titles, broken down, not followed. On the arrest of wanted person for December to February twenty-twenty-one, we were able to arrest twelve wanted persons, four among them were autowired under most wanted person top one, five and six of Alaminos City and top seven of San Maria, no Isabella, and eight other wanted persons, city level. Yung top five and six and top seven of these was during my term. It is my first week, nagpinalabas po po lahat yung mga personal natin, na may mga tumahan, tumating sa amin na waran, then, ina- uh, inaist po namin 'yung intelligence gathering, so luckily, we, nakuha namin, dumayo pa kami ng San Maria, no Isabella, nakuha namin itong top seven. Tapos, nakuha rin po namin 'yung top six and top five ng Alaminos City wanted person. And more to come. Unang taiiligang din, for December to February twenty-twenty-one, Alaminos City Police Station have two successful operations with a total of six arrested persons and confiscation of bet money amounting to one thousand five hundred seventeen. On our COVID nineteen, which was, for three consecutive months from December to February twenty-twenty-one, Alami- Alaminos City Police Station have arrested one thousand three hundred thirty-four, broken down into thirty-six with probation of curfew, nine for no face mask, twelve for no face shield, uh, these were fined, and five hundred seventy-six warrant for the month of December. And for the month of January, we arrested and filed a case with disobey, disobedience on, on curfew. Six curfew with fine and four hundred fifty warrant. And for, for the month of February, there were nine curfew violators, nineteen no face mask, and two hundred sixteen warrant, all warrant apprehended, violators of I A P and guideline were penalized for community service. So, kung madada- madadaanan niyo po ang police station ngayon, maging bi tayo po, malaming, saka tayong mahahawayan dun. Kasi, uh, when I assumed as the Chief of Police, the first thing that I observed in the station is, uh, parang siyang napakilmaan. So, what I did is to take aim at the police station. So, pinakascap po namin, ina- ina- repay po muna namin, para ka- maging maaliwalas nun po 'yung police station. Para pagmumunta ang tao dun, maganda 'yung tingin nila dun ng police station, we would be having a good ambiance inside the police station. Then, yung mga ibang, I for the latest meeting po, so, so lahat po 'yung mga violator, instead of us, pay for labor, na nung nagtanaw po ang mahal ng labor, seventy thousand, yung pagpataas ko lang. So, why not, yung mga, instead of paying these violators, mag-community service na lang, kaya ang dami nag community service na sa police station. Yun na po 'yung binawa namin. Even, we also plan for those transatlanticist na hindi pa tumagraduate, napulang pa sila dun sa community service, so, mabilang may pakuntahin niyo ng police station, mag-community service sila dun, di pa tulungan natin silang gumanoy. For the COVID nineteen affectation of the, of the Alaminos City Police Station, as of date, wala pa pong nagpositive sa amin ang police. Further, at present, nag-eneron na kami inesthetris na station health unit sa amin police station, at the same time, my main chief, parang win positive kami, just maybe meron kami, kailangan parantin na personal namin na suspected of COVID. Next. Uh, with regards to the border control, control points, quarantine control point, eto po 'yung ating dalawa na control point. It's in barangay Olokalos and in the Welcome Arch at barangay, at Batwan. So, may resolution po 'yung I T S na parang pinag-congratulate po, na pinapayakan na sila, kailangan of equality, yung medical setting, need just I T O. There was a memo coming from our higher headquarters, uh, de- uh, i-assess daw namin po, ta-campry na namin 'yung mga border control kami. But, uh, I will give my assessment on the later part of my presentation. Next. For the assessment, Alamin- uh, for the period from January to Febr- January one, February twenty, Al- Alaminos City is generally peaceful. Though there were recorded three incidents under peace and order indicator, it did not affect overall situation in Alaminos City. The populace of Alaminos City will continue to be assured of a peaceful environment and a safer place to live, work, and best and do business. That while at the peaceful state, the city police force will continue its mandate to serve and protect the people and enjoy all means of proactive approach to prevent all forms of crime to happen. No matter how miserable the task ahead may be, the will to achieve the formal objective of delivering expected service is always the primary goal of concern for Alaminos City Police Station. And then, the untiring support given, being given by the L G U family to the community. In all its plans and programs greatly dominate, the untiring effort of all personnel of Alaminos City Police Station perform their duty and responsibility for quality service that will benefit the people of Alaminos City and the citizens fighting. So, I will also present my way forward, with my way forward is, it is part of my plan, part of the mission concerns, and ano pa 'yung pwede naming yakrate. So, one is, Alaminos City Police Station is a city police station, but mas marami pa pong tao 'yung last-able quality ba sa amin. So, I made representation to our higher headquarters, na madagayan kami ang tao sa amin police station. Then, we also would like to establish an additional police community precinct within the strategic areas of Sitios, Atsana, barangay Pogasio, and barangay Palamis. Then, another one is the creation of Alaminos City Police Station squad team. God forbid, wala nam pong mayayari, uh, crisis incident, but whatever, at least we have, we are proactive. So, meron tayong stand, meron tayong team na trained to counter any incident or backup sa lahat ng, ng crisis incident na mangyayari dito sa amin police, al- ating, at that. Also is the variation of the tactical riding motor fire unit, which will become is a, para, uh, proactive for, for preventing crime to happen. It is po, pero mas mapadamit ako natin 'yung police, mas mapalakas po natin 'yung police disability ng mga police, ang mapagcrime, na napakasal, na 'yung mga nakamugot na maging, na nakayu reforing. Next is, Alaminos City is a tourist place, tourist destination place, tourist destination. So, it is also one of my plan to strengthen the tourist police of Alaminos City. Then, what we are doing now, yung improvement in the station facilities to enhance quality service to the people. So, we want Alaminos City to be, yung maayos naman po, saka presentable siya sa tao, lalo na may mga turista tayo, makita nila ang mga police, accountable, uh, reliable, credible, saka maayos na sa tamang bilis, yung amin mga station eh, kaaya-aya naman po, pa-makita. Hindi naman, para hindi naman yung po kami eh, kahiya ng police station ng Alaminos City, napakadumi, napaka, napakapangit, tao ng mga police lousy. So, yun po 'yung isa sa amin, ah, isa sa mga plan ko, yung po, i-improve. And then, another concern is the finalization and awarding of Alaminos City Police Station lan- land title. Then, a creation, crafting of programs, projects, and activities that will bring Alaminos City Police closer to the community. Uh, this will be my main, uh, program. After kung ma-reb- ma-rehabilitate po ang amin police station, po sabi nga nila, yun is always start at your home. So, after I finish rehabilitating my home, which is the police station, we will go down. But, uh, ang gusto po namin is, I will bring the police of Alaminos closer to the community. Na ang community po, hindi na sila mga tao sa amin, hindi sila nagdadalawang piso sa amin sa amin. Na, ang mga police ng Alaminos ay madaling napita nila, magiging, at ganinang kasama, babangan, sabi nga nila, uh, peace and order, or it's not just a job of the police, it is job of everyone. So, for our ongoing project, as yun, eto po 'yung Oplantilamos po, tinawag po namin Oplantilamos. Then, for our recommendation, so, next. Uh, as I said, uh, we recommend the retention of the quarantine control points, which will become the border control points of, uh, Alaminos City, going inside and outside of Alaminos City. Then, uh, due to, yung police to population ratio po ngayon ng Alaminos City Police Station is one, is two one thousand four hundred sixty. Um, actual strength po namin is seventy-one, may apat na yun, yung bito, sixty-seven, ah, sixty-six? Fifty-seven na lang po yung, yung whole body na pwede tumabout. So, sa dami po nun, hindi po namin kaya, so, I, we are suggesting, I already made the, the sensation to the police, the headquarters, na yung adjusted multivalities, yung katulad po dun sa may alos, yung police po ng Mabinin, nagtulmin sa border control, ang police po ng Alaminos, nando sa border control, magcombine na lang po 'yung dalawa dun. At least maka- ma- madagdagan namin ang maging, hindi man namin mamit 'yung eight-man team na nasa checkpoint, at least kahit apat na lang po nun dun. Kasi ngayon po, so far, ang Alaminos City, ang kaya lang po namin idigay sa mga border force namin is two personnel, four chief, or two key, dalawa lang. Then, also the force multipliers, with the force of barangay Cano, so we, I am making uh, force physical to this different, uh, heads, then later on, babawak po ako sa mga barangay, ako, magigipagmin po ako sa mga barangay kapitan, to coordinate with them, na yung kanila mga barangay tanong, closing the movement for the support of Alaminos City Police Station sa amin anti-crimin- criminality campaign. Next. So, that's all, uh, sir, and ma'am, uh, which I look forward to, uh, working with, with this august body. And, uh, we have Alaminos City Police Station, sabi nga nila, lagi handa po't ebo.
Thank you, marami salamat po, uh, please, thank you, Leonard P. Paredes. So, for the information, uh, ang ating, eh, di- So, for the information, uh, ang ating A D C president is si Abidin Abidin Bahay. So, kung ganun po sila, sila ang meeting sa ligas, uh, pwede rin kayo matell na. They will, they will coordinate po kung kailan. Ang ating S K, Federation President, uh, siya pong S K, aktibus po sila, si Councilor Laverde. And the rest po of the city councilors, um, chairperson po ng business order is si Councilor Verna, rato, kita po siya, sawa po ni Kapitan ng Poglasion. So, any questions po from our fellow councilors? After, after, any advice or, uh, after probably, any questions or advice po the Councilor Abidin Bahay?
Kung kinapatalo lang sa akin eh, si German, uh, ganun din ang daun yang, gaya po 'yung ginagawa. Hindi mo masasabing merit, pero wala pong, ano? So, ano, may di pang, sorry, complicated.
Marami complicated dito, kaya nga siya, Councilor.
Hindi, may problema pero, eh, eh, keep. Ayaw mo, ulas kasi ng mga warehouse, eh, tatanong sila, pakapit na po sila.
Uh, we will check sa, dun sa, we will check kung doon sa, kung meron akong sinapayagan na tayo, i-have to be ready sa kuwan, then, uh, we will give you feedback if we can.
Sige po.
Kung ano, magtanong, ating, ating, after na, sa, sa customer ng.
Basta diya'y, pero, pero, hindi na.
Hi, President of Community, this is received. For review, we have received a letter from Miss Celia Artaletis. This is Development Partner, Learning with Global Options Corporation, to present a program that is character building development program.
Please share your mind. Oh, it's back.
Thank you.
Yes, so, what is time of the day? What time is the set?
Can you put your message, sir, that's informed by us?
Okay, so, what's already for review? Do we schedule the appointment, do we schedule the schedule already or? Uh, I think we're going to discuss the way to do it.
Regarding books, sir.
Huh?
Regarding education book.
You know, let's, uh, check first, let's leave the papers first and then next session. That's, I'm having the calendar for committee hearing. So, what I'm saying, begin the paper.
Sir?
What I'm saying, begin the paper. So, let us, see first, let's do up to the exam first, regarding the set company before we schedule this for committee hearing. So, I think in this, we're gonna go for our next regulation. Go on next regulation. Our book. So, yeah, so let's leave the papers first and then if, okay, committee hearing, committee hearing, I guess, but if, if, baka, ang mga ng si Counselor Aba na lang, may pa-usbok, um, uh, we get the background, because managang time in this. So, under privilege hour pala, let me include also the, we have to leave, like what Counselor Naul Bakay said, we have to revisit the, the traffic ordinance, dahil, it cannot be seen nga dito sa TV, siya kay mga president, they break, siya kay party natin. Required ka talaga ni D I L G, so are we scheduled a committee hearing regarding that, uh, later? So, I just want to present it para masama po sa agenda natin. So, manag ka dahil next item.
We proceeded an assigned business. The first, uh, let us say, ordinance law advising the provisions of Republic Act 11313, otherwise known as the 30 states of the City of Alaminos.
Shall we, uh, Counselor Osito Pontedera, should we schedule a committee hearing? The time is at 11:00. Hi, the count, hold on. Are you making, uh, those pages? No, I'm sorry. Counselor Osito Pontedera is equally, uh, able to doctor limits and state cases, but Counselor, he's sorry. March 10, 10:00 AM, 20, March 10, 2021, 10:00 AM. So, please invite, uh, the guests that the Counselor she has to like to invite. Next item.
For an aside, an aside number, please, sir, we have no, this person is getting a little white hole for example.
Okay, sir. Who's the session? You can carry it. So. Shall I also include item number three, the this box, yung title po ng ano yan? Uh, the report by Counselor Siri dot com, that I include item number two and item number three, other than time business in the this today for deliberation. Baka ano? How many number? Sure, uh, so, ano naman eh, so item na lang, si Counselor Bernadette. Then, 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 sir. So, anyway, let's include in the this today and just deliberate if you will approve the item. Next item, number four.
Ordinance granting franchise to United Catholic, uh, Owners and Obligations Association.
Counselor, add that.
And my issue, I, okay, that, uh, 10 o'clock, and then.
Counselor, as the Director of Astral, the Chairman does schedule sa committee hearing, committee hearing, on, uh, March 5, 10 o'clock in the morning, uh, please invite the representative. March 5, ba? Good, March 5. Please invite, uh, people concerned and, uh, visit the opponent or the representative of the market. Next item.
Resolution calling cabinet or the city, indeed, always expecting the met.
Uh, this item, uh, resolution, as we told, I, uh, Counselor Siri, not cited by any, cited by Counselor Giisa, Counselor Pontedera, Counselor Rene, that we put the said resolution on the this today for deliberation. Next item.
Amendment to the probi-, uh, the 10 offices post under City Ordinance Number 2009-12, otherwise known as the comprehensive Fisher's Code, Fisher's Code of the City of Alaminos of 2009.
Counselor Naul Bakay, oh, sorry, Fisher, Counselor Robinae, in coordination with Counselor Naul Bakay, when can we schedule a committee hearing?
Uh, yes, Peter, uh, hello. Discussion of committee hearing on March 16, 10 o'clock in the morning.
Okay, the meeting is set, the direct amendment of the Fisher's Code on March 16, 10 o'clock in the morning. Next item. I don't know, the traffic ordinance first. Counselor Bernadette, I will give to, uh, schedule for committee hearing, uh, the update and the amendment of the traffic ordinance. Is there anybody available to, uh, Counselor Bakay? Next week? March 11, 9:30 in the morning, is set, committee hearing is set on March 11, 9:30 in the morning. Okay, that's correct. So, next item. Okay, the chair rules for the five minutes, just, of the recording, please. So, regarding yung, uh, uh, Counselor, I'll tell you, uh, admin case. Abay, diba? Chara ba, chara ba, chara ba? Change, change. Uh, so, we, full ordinance is admin case, talaga, uh, para ayaw mag-set down ng nagwawakay. Pero, I think, it, it, pag pinatawag ang dito, I think pwede na kasi na maghala, mag-yes. So, since, ano, uh, ayaw talaga mag-set, pero, i-reform ko sa committee, nalap, tas, kaya nalap ang mag-set, kaya ni Gustavo, ito yung, please. But, uh, I personally, it's, kung ito na full ng barangay, sabi na, okay lang, may gina, pero, syempre, abay, abay na ba, o na, pala, or, or, na, na. Pero, ayaw talaga mahaba ay, but, syempre, if you have to give away, you're gonna complain na. So, it's, it's painful, I can say, the, the schedule for a committee hearing. So, do you now order my attention? Put the record back on. And this is the case, uh, shall we schedule for committee hearing? Regarding the said, uh, committee? Counselor, how do you hear?
Should I move the said matter to be called in terms of the cell hearing?
Okay, we're so far, boy. So, five minutes, okay? Ah, 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 ah.
March, uh, Monday, which is July 5.
Yer, kaya, ah. Yer, kaya, ah.
Committee is such a 150 days, 20 days, 20 days.
Counselor, kung ayaw ni Gaby, can't create it, para, natapos na yun. Next week, 11, so, may ang traffic ordinance.
March 15.
Para. Para, kaya, hindi naman sakan, ako. March 15. So, committee hearing is Monday, March 15.
At, uh, 11:30.
11:30 in the morning, uh, committee hearing is set, regarding the mistletoe case, March 15, 11:00 in the morning. Next item. Yes, Counselor Giisa? Survey? Schedule a hearing? Okay, so, there's a proposal, there's a motion to schedule a hearing regarding, uh, vol-, survey and volu- on March?
18:30.
18:30. March 18, 9:00 AM? 9:30 in the morning, any objection to, if some contact another time, wala, pumala, uh, so, the committee hearing is set regarding the volu-, issue and the survey on March 18, 9:30 in the morning, chaired by Counselor Giisa. Next item. May action na tayo sa committee hearing, yes, no?
Yes, sir.
Okay, for the next session. Okay.
We have proceeded the committee reports. The first item is joint committee report from the hearing held on February 12th regarding the request for restitution of traffic development period to the proposed establishment of a capital station by One Human and Amnestic Royal Corporation, pursuant to City Ordinance Number 2019-12.
Counselor Pontedera, uh, nice.
Sir, sir, the committee hearing was conducted, um, the Friday, 2021, present were Counselor Porro, Noy, Senator Xiraso, and Mr. Pontedera. Also present were the representative from the office of the CBO, who's hearing, suing and representative of One Human and Royal Corporation. The committee, we bring the above subject matter, will be presented, uh, representative from the opponent corporation, and well, if of time icing, the documents suddenly rebelled at the other. The committee found out, uh, lacking requirements such as, uh, authority for the representative, tax litigation and dissolution from the concerned barangay council, endorsing the same and establish the land is agreeable to, and be supported. So, still be, worth the comments of land issued to the local government code. And the committee advised, uh, one very well, it's a good thing, to secure the lacking documents and submit, uh, state document through the other office. We did that, uh, above, uh, state finding, the committee hereby moves for the adoption of the committee report. And the dark request, uh, will let, will let that until the department's accord, under the ordinance number 2019-12, and the local government code being submitted to this condition.
Yes. Next, so, there is a motion by Counselor Pontedera to adopt this committee report, this subject matter be, be archived, pending the, the requirements that are undocumented by the said, uh, development. Any objection? Given that the said committee report is adapted and the said item be archived, uh, pending the documents needed for the, uh, shared project. So, we have here, uh, our secret registrar, who discussed yung, sa, mobile land ba, kanina, do we still need to be, tomorrow, tomorrow? Okay, so, so, there's, no, since we already did it a while ago, we don't care. Unless the dark part will, uh, give us, uh, more services, then, ah, thank you, thank you. So, may invite sa'kin dun kanina. So, next item. Okay.
Joint Committee Report from the Hearing House of the Friday, please regarding the request for restitution of authority to City Mayor, our friends selected to enter the contract on service agreement, one between the City Governments on Condesin Land and state, uh, fifth aid, fifth aid enterprises for comprehensive general case control services.
Counselor, you do the address, yeah, honey.
The committee hearing was conducted on February 5, 2021, present were Counselors Rosalito Pontedera, Rob del Ranoi, Dalde de Leon, and this representative. Also present were the representatives from the office of the CHO, GSO, and City Bureau Council. The said hearing has tackled the request to grant the City Mayor the authority to enter into a contract service agreement with pest aid enterprises with business address, um, at, uh, Block 6, Map Arthur Highways, and Rock Hill, Star Luxity for a comprehensive general pest control service. The main purpose of the contractual service agreement consists of an undertaking by the contractor to perform work to its client, the L G U or Alaminos Dialysis Clinic, in the form of services as follows: General Pest Control Maintenance Program, Bruton Control Maintenance Program, listing for flying insect maintenance program, residual spraying. In the course of the hearing, Dr. Enriquez from the City Health Office informed the committee that the Department of Health mandated the CHO to enter into a memorandum of agreement with an accredited pest control service. She emphasized further that accreditation of fielding, a field health for the dialysis unit is one that is also required for the operation of a dialysis center or units. Hence, if the field health is not accredited for the unit, the operation will not start, since the patient needs field health in order to avail the services of the dialysis unit. The City General Office on its part stressed the need to follow the usual procurement processes and to undergo a public beating and other security procurements for this purpose. In view of the above stated findings, the committee hereby moves for the adoption of this committee report and the proposed measure be deferred. Mister Chair.
Okay. So, can I, uh, um, the advanced implement process, talbo, still, uh, convenient, quality, talma?
Yes, Mister Chair, it was, uh, my understanding that the service was still under the process of being bitted out.
Okay.
The precaution.
Okay, so, there, there's a motion by Counselor Giisa to adopt this committee report, this is made for the archives, uh, since, uh, the performance will be seeking, will be passing to the procurement process, uh, for this project, so, any objection? Given that the said committee report is been adopted, the said measure is accepted. Next item.
Joint Committee Report from the Hearing House of the Friday, 8, regarding the review of documents for accreditation of United Elupanja fraternity and sorority in Civil Action of Alaminos Street Chapter.
Counselor Pontedera, you see, we just started, uh, paragraph two, second paragraph, after, this is, uh, one, uh, after sure, the, through, it, through, extraordinary of the documents submitted by the African, the committee found that, found out that the letter had complied with all the statutory requirement for accreditation. In view of the above stated findings, the committee hereby move for the adoption of this committee report and the proposed measure be limited on the basis of the then, of the. So, no, the Counselor Pontedera, that we adopt this committee report, the said item be studied, and the study be continued. Any objection? Given that the said committee report is still adapted, and the said measure is included in our this opportunity. Next item.
Joint Committee Report from the Hearing House of the Friday, 8, regarding the proposed ordinance regulating the use of single-use plastic bags in the City of Alaminos.
Counselor Giisa.
Chair, the committee hearing was conducted on February 8, 2021, at 10:00 in the morning. Present were Counselors for Dalde Ranoi, Dalde de Leon, and the District Attorney, who presided over the meeting. The following resource persons from the L G U attended the said hearing, um, Miss Rosalie Alrelo, the Tourism Department, Mr. Alvin Coachera, C D R M O, Dr. Uson, C H O, Engineer Comby, Engineering Department, and Engineer Aposta, Engineering Department. The purpose of the hearing was to deliberate on the proposed ordinance regulating the use of single-use plastics and polystyrene in Alaminos City. A draft of the proposed ordinance was provided to the resource speakers for their comments and observations. Um, your present, this representation clarified that under the proposed ordinance, the following are deemed exempted from its coverage: primary packaging of frozen foods, wet products, bottled water, and the like, and packaging of wet and dry goods such as fish, poultry, meat, sugar, flour, rice grains, and light. Um, the latter, um, the latter exemption is, uh, premised on hygiene. The body was likewise informed that the ordinance provides for a transition period of one year from its effectiveness. During the discussion, Miss Alre- Alrelo said that insofar that Tourism Office is concerned, they welcome the proposed ordinance and they look forward to the restrictions on styrofoam, um, food packaging that this constitutes the common trash left by the visitors in the islands. Mr. Contreras supported the position that eateries and ambulance members should likewise be included in the ordinance coverage. Dr. Uson agreed with, uh, Mr. Contreras' statement. Engineer Comby and Engineer Aposta both stressed that persons or units should already be designated to monitor compliance with the ordinance, but this has always been a perennial problem in terms of implementation. It was likewise suggested that the torso and P M P be included, the implementer, and that massive information dissemination campaign be undertaken once the ordinance is entered. Counselor Ranoi suggested the promotion of alternative materials for, for carry-on bags in view of the proposed legislation. He likewise suggested that those in the business of selling plastic bags be advised of the proposed regulations since they will be affected hereby. Counselor De Leon, on the other hand, suggested that we should proceed with the information and dissemination of information at the barangay level so that the residents may be properly advise, may be properly advised of, of the regulation. There be no other matters to be discussed, the dialogue was concluded at 11:00 in the morning. In view of the above committee here, the committee hereby moves for the adoption of this committee report and recommends that the proposed ordinance be scheduled for a public hearing on, uh, March 29, 2021, Mister Chair, at 10 o'clock in the morning.
Counselor Pontedera moves for the adoption of this committee report and to schedule a public hearing regarding the settlement in March 29, 10 o'clock in the morning, any objection? Given that the said committee report is still adapted, the said measure is scheduled for a public hearing on March 29, 2021, 10:00 AM. Please invite, uh, all concerned agencies, and of course, please to certify the draft, please invite all the civil society organization, regardless would be involved in this measure. Next item.
Joint Committee Report from the Hearing House of the Friday, 12, regarding the request for enactment of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Providing for the Establishment of Bicycle Lanes, Shield Lanes, and Bicycle Facilities Innovation There's Two and Providing Fundamentals."
I think that this committee hearing was canceled, so, this was, uh, did anyone, uh, yes?
Maybe we'll check the, uh, item number six, we're supposed to go on, uh, the later, then.
Five and six, seven, five. So, schedule item number five and six, six and seven. When do we still?
If item five and six, uh, I know that it be scheduled in March 21, eleven o'clock here.
So, for item, item number five and item number six, on the committee board.
Hmm.
The hearing will be set on March 22, 11 o'clock and 11:30 o'clock respectively. Regarding item number seven, the updated beginning ordinance, Counselor Ranoi. Uh, sir, may I have a reservation, and how will we get here? So, shall we schedule it next week?
This is the committee hearing on March five, December month. Uh, uh.
Eleven. Eleven A M.
Eleven A M.
Committee hearing is set, delay and updating the beginning ordinance on March five, eleven o'clock in the morning. Next item.
Joint Committee Report from the Hearing House of July sixteen regarding the review of barangay and local values twenty twenty one and the financial value twenty twenty and H K and local values twenty twenty one of the following barangay, Victoria, Tegua, Amangakan, Kalipoy, Palaboy, Walangay, Walangay.
Here, the committee conducted the hearing on December sixteen to review two barangay values, five fifty values, which is what council was concerned about, and I hope that we, uh, this is the nation's here, so the committee, also present of the representatives concerned barangay councils, barangay citizens, and the people of this town, this K sector, the fifty thirty seven meter value, fifty fifty one value. The several barangays, this committee will discuss this hearing with their projects and their priorities concerned based on legislative findings presented by the Senate documents, certification, and threat to our community, certified, and verified, certified by the rules. This committee has conducted, has concluded, because of barangay, this value is coming from there. There is a above five days, the committee hereby most of the action of this committee report. The same subject matter we will read in the business today, for example, an action, the union declared valid operative, subject barangay, this K value.
Remove the council's here, not the top of the committee report and the top matter be included in the subject for the regulation. Any objection? You did not decide to make the report is hereby adopted. The said matter be included in the subject for the regulation. Next item.
Joint Committee Report from the Public Hearing House of July seventeen regarding the proposed ordinance and ordinance packaging creating a food bank in the city of Alaminus Pangasinan and providing guidelines for the operation of there.
Counselor Applebahi.
The public hearing was conducted on July seventeen, twenty twenty one, at seven thirty, he is seven thirty of the seven, he is very comfortable, and then he presented his progress, he can establish this. He is a charlatan, the establishment of food bank in the city who could anyhow use the cabin on one destination for less fortunate to doing that we do. This is a proxy device, that the program of uh of the feeding program giving a practice in the barangay's kitchen where it is, mechanics used to supply hot meals and cook food in all barangays this city through the use of available tools, vans, or device. The frequency of service to the barangay is scheduled for barangay importation with the concern barangay government. He added that it brought and sustained few partnerships with other services. NGOs and uh freezers holders and whatever donors committed by this project will be placed under the care of the government. In view of the above stated findings, the committee recommend books for the adoption of this common resource and the proposed feature will be regarded by for certain meaning on the business of the day, two weeks from now.
Okay, uh, this is move by. Do you want to just make a comment here, or donation? Our donation. We pulled by Counselor Applebahi for the adoption of this committee report. And uh, the said matter be scheduled for second reading in our regular session two weeks from now. Any objection? You did not decide to make the report is hereby adopted. The said measure be carried for second reading in our regular session two weeks from now. Most quarters in the city uh are very busy. Next item.
Joint Com- Joint Committee Report from the Hearing House of July eighteen regarding the members of the public order of sixty.
Uh, Counselor Bena. Please.
The hearing was conducted on July eight, at eighteen twenty twenty one, at the center of the legal, uh, fifty legal officer and representative from the F P also and licensee office. The committee was called for the purpose of soliciting responses, ideas, and suggestions to the comments made by the official legal officer on some provision of our public order and sixty codes. The fifty legal officer was expressed in observation that the comments were not centered on the legality of the ordinance, but by changing the authorization to extend, that the P L O didn't went through and saw the definition of scientific words that had possible and non-malleable materials. The committee opted not to discuss the comments of the P L O for the moment, but instead assigned each comment the concerned officers' project suggestions, insights, or ideas as an answer to each of the comments, the subject for discussion on the next hearing. The committee likewise suggested to invite a representative from the City Health Office and the TNT on the next meeting since some of the comments made it their own, dealt on the respective officers. In view of the above stated findings, the committee hereby moves for the adoption of this committee report and recommend for this forward. Contact another committee meeting on March eleven uh, ten thirty in the morning.
So, Counselor Bena, move for the adoption of this committee report and schedules a committee hearing regarding the said item on March eleven, ten thirty in the morning. Any objection? You did not decide to make the report is hereby adopted. And uh, said hearing is set on March eleven, ten thirty in the morning. Next item.
Joint Committee Report from the Hearing House of July twenty three regarding the proposed ordinance establishing the sisterhood training and quality and providing guidance for sister, sisterhood order for, for the city of Alaminus Pangasinan and the local government.
Uh, you must check, can I just read the opposed portion?
Yes, yes.
Not only if you have copy.
Yes.
If you have the five, six, five days, the committee hereby move to the adoption of this committee report. And I think we have two, is it a little, uh, second reading already if the two draft, the two versions of the proposed ordinance are already consolidated. Consolidated. So, two weeks from now, second reading.
You did not? Uh, so, Counselor General, move for the adoption of this committee report. You said measure be carried for second reading in our next regular session two weeks from now. Any objection? You did not decide to make the report is hereby adopted. You said uh, measure be carried for second reading in our next regular session two weeks from now. Please prepare the integrated draft and uh all the info that were uh discussed in the morning. Next item.
Joint Committee Report from the Hearing House of July four regarding the proposed ordinance granting financial assistance to frontliners who have been at first step attend by COVID nineteen in the performance of therapies.
Counselor General, move for the adoption. Two weeks from now. So, two weeks.
Uh, you know, this is the general, we can proceed to reading in two weeks time.
Wait, as we vote by uh, Counselor General, the adoption of this committee report and the said item be carried for second reading in our next regular session two weeks from now. Any objection? You did not decide to make the report is hereby adopted and the said uh measure be carried for second reading in our, in our regular session two weeks from now. Paranggangay, ganitis na rito. Pagka may na, pinangangan na mga cities na paranggangay naman si automatic meron tayong ibigay ng. Next item.
Joint Committee Report from the Hearing House of July twenty four regarding the recent proposal to move on of Alaminus Pangasinan. Art right is selected to enter into cooperation agreement when admitting the city government of the city of Alaminus Pangasinan and the planning network is for the B C K project in the development of a digital photo line for a digital visitor management system.
Yes, Counselor General. Our target, uh, so, Counselor Sison, move for the, move to our target to measure up until the the relaunching or the, or the, or the, uh, keep to the, 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 the. I'm actually like that. Next item.
May put in the business of the day. Under new business, we have a second reading of resolution temporarily suspending the implementation of Article A of the Local Government Code of Twenty Ninety Three of the City of Alaminus Pangasinan.
Uh. Can I? You pay us, you know. Well, I have this one question regarding item number one. How until when will be suspended? Okay, Article E. Objection?
Uh, uh, business practices is the end.
Okay.
For a week or two, part of the government of this town.
Uh.
And the plan is to suspend the uh limitation of the provision and we issue others.
This is that also, it's a red.
Yes, yes, that's the one, uh, number two.
Okay. So, para to give may, to, to be suspended, to give may for it. So, this is a suggestion to the local bank. So, this would be for uh the whole year, uh, yeah. I don't like to give you part of the year, so. I feel it, uh. First half, maybe first half. Collection of mga rental stores, maya.
This is back.
This is a stock, sir. Yeah, so, that could be, okay. Siguro we can uh, suspend that the, uh, one, one this year, or this year, and then this year.
Uh, I think it's a lot, something to another extension.
Okay.
If we don't sign, from the review, eh, may na pa rin ng thickness, you know, it's a good solution.
If it is seven, then para third one, ano, June nalang.
June nalang.
So, madalas secretariat include the term that uh when the suspend, when the resolution is suspended, is definitely suspended up until the June thirty. June thirty, uh, twelve month, twelve month, uh, twenty twenty one. So, with the same, with the same one, we, uh, five to twenty five percent is from business tax. This year, naman. So, uh, to boom, tama ba, or? If they pay monthly, or if they pay monthly?
Binabayaran nila po ngayon, based nun sa maglalas year eight. Uh, basis ng payment po nila ngayon, this year.
This year.
Based nun sa sales or process, nila, wala sila ngang nakaraan.
Okay.
So, if you hundred percent.
Simple lang, simple.
Ang basis mo natin ngayon is thirty, twenty, thirty, ninety.
Yes.
So, thirty ninety na ang basis natin.
Thirty ninety.
Ninety po. See, nasa natin ang thirty thirty is normal yung three nine eh.
Okay.
So, nakasumbong kami na ang basis natin is thirty ninety, that's normal yung business po eh.
Okay.
So, it don't, it won't be thirty five percent. Okay, may babayad sila, it will be twenty percent.
Okay, so.
For this year.
Okay. Do we put a term, uh, for twenty twenty one? Uh, business tax. This, oh, yeah. Twenty five percent discount to business tax to all affected businesses during the implementation of the warranty, so business tax this year.
This year.
Okay. So, may I just grant, okay. So, this table, madalas secretariat, that the, the basis will be twenty ninety, seventy five, uh, twenty five percent discount of that amount. And also number one is uh, it will be until June thirty, twenty twenty one, twelve month. So, uh, can you see? So, there is a motion to adopt the said two resolutions. Is there a second? Second move by Counselor Abahi, Counselor Sison for the adoption of the said two resolutions. Any objection? Amendment, discussion, you did not decide the said two resolutions are hereby adopted. Okay, naman sa local finance, so, okay, for a late naman. Next item.
Resolution of Alaminus City Mayor Art Rights is selected to enter into the memorandum agreement while between the local government and the city of Alaminus Pangasinan and the land back of the Philippines to serve as agent funding partner for a back constituents during serious idet suspension.
Remove by Counselor Adopt, second move by Counselor Applebahi, Counselor Sison, Counselor General, Counselor General for the adoption of the said two resolutions. Any objection? You did not decide the solution is hereby adopted. Next item.
Resolution of Alaminus City Mayor Art Rights is selected to enter into the memorandum agreement while between the city government of Alaminus Pangasinan and the B C K Incorporated for the utilization of B C K electric trains for task to process federal claims online.
So, this is the, this is yung kanina na explain the law of Nana. So, what, what is our pressure to, it is a private company, no private with a president, so uh, or he is the one? This is regarding the exclusivity for the the realities. So, we can, we require now, kasi gusto na mag-paperless, you know, so. Don't you think, oh, sorry, si Pissbox. But this is, oh, sorry, si Pissbox, oh, sorry, si Pissbox, maya eh. I have taken, I did.
Eh, I don't know.
So, I don't know, Counselor Apple, what do you think, uh? So, since this will be dealing body, so here we go, para, may company po, may, 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 Pissbox. So, can we defer this an item first, we proceed to other.
Next item is the resolution calling detention ordering the city engineers of this district to implement the provisions of City Ordinance number twenty nine, number twelve, and there was an announcement of killing ordinance and other related rules on ordinance in the city of Alaminus.
Any motion? So, this is the resolution, kasi ngaan po tayong ordinance na bago po magpatampa sa ibat-ibang lugar sa Alaminos, dapat kumuha po sana ng development permit sa sampu niya. So, nagitan mo nga, marami na kumagatampak. So, mas importante po sana dumahan mo sa sampu niya, bago po uh, magsimulang magtampa, para alabry, marami po akong iinatayo. May suggestion, is ilagay natin sa resolution, kung anong mga I A Y A. Maya, yung, uh, I think, uh, so. Yung mga rise na, 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 sa may Amangay, sa may Palamis Meron, sa may Tay Tay, San Vicente Meron.
Lahat eh.
Lahat, oo. Lahat, oo.
As, eh, siguro, uh, narinig natin, pwedeng mag-submit sa, ng, ng hearing ng, 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 mga talap ng, ng, ginagawa niya. Si, si, isa pa lang dumasali eh.
Included sa resolution, yung mga, yung, talagang mga ginagawang development along the road. Kasi, ang huli problema, tan, yung bahay. Kasi, palapit na papasok na naman tayo sa naiisusunod after summer, so, baka nga, bahay na naman tayo, ngang dami tatap.
Para tayong pinatawanan nga, sa, 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 sa.
So, any motion?
Thank you, sir, yeah, na, na, na.
Counselor Ceballos, the set resolution, any second, second is by Counselor Ceballos, Counselor Dino. Any objection? Counselor, uh, great, any objection? Hearing now, the set, the resolution is issued by adopt. Next item.
Resolution of the rising United International Partnership Association in.
Counselor Anoy.